I want to call to order the Hopkinton Town Council Meeting of July 1st, 2013 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
I move that we convene as a council and seal the executive session minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
First on the agenda tonight is to swear in two new police officers with the Hopkinton Police Department, and to do that will be our chief, David Palmer. Chief.
Good evening. I'm here again, exactly one year later after Patrolman Spontes and Patrolman Eastwood got sworn in, and here we are again swearing in two new officers. I want to thank the town council, I want to thank the town manager for allocating the money to do so. Back in July Sergeant Patton and Detective Cole retired, and we had a short time to get two new officers in place. We had basically from August to December 3rd to get two names to the police academy, and there was no wiggle room. If you know anything about the process that you go through, that's an extremely short period of time. And with that, because I think it's important that you know what the process that we go through to do that, I'm just going to tell you a little bit of how we came up with the two officers Jonathan Reeve and Alexander Valanas at the end of the day, and the rigors that they went through to get into the position that they're in now. In August, we put out applications for police officers in Hopkinton, and we received 111 applications. I think that's a sign of the times, I think unemployment and the fact I think people want to be police officers. Of the 111 applicants we had, 90 showed up for the agility test. The agility test was held at the Cherahoe High School. I want to thank my own officers who volunteered their time, but I also want to thank the Richmond, Westerly, and Charleston officers that dedicated their time. These officers are certified to run these agility tests, and only they can be the ones that score. We had other officers that donated their time assisting in basically corralling the people into the positions. Of the 111 applicants, 90 passed the agility test. To kind of give you an idea of what they had to pass, there was, setups were somebody under 30 years old had to do 38 setups, 29 push-ups, run a mile and a half in 12 minutes and 30 seconds, and do a 300-meter run in 59 seconds. I'm not going to go through my two officers' scores, but I'll say that when they needed 29 push-ups, one did 64 and one did 65. I won't say which did which. There'll be bragging rights, we'll go in another year and see what the total will be at that point. Of the 69 that passed, they went to a written test, and in order to pass on to the next phase, you had to score 70 or above. Of that, 69, 41 passed the written test. Four dropped out at that point, and we interviewed 37 in two days. It was a panel of myself, Captain Carrier, and Sergeant Percival, and we did 37, about 18 a day, and it was a long day. Of those, we narrowed it down to 14 for a second interview. The second interview, we narrowed it down to three, and we started doing backgrounds. We needed three because we weren't sure, now you had to go to a second agility test with the municipal academy, and if anybody got hurt or didn't pass, if we didn't send them that day, we would be, we would not be able to send the two that we needed. Out of the three that we sent, we chose the two officers that are sitting before you today. After that, background check, and then a psychological test, and then a physical test affirmed by a physician. That got them to the academy. The academy started on January 7th and ran through to May 24th. And last time I read all the different courses that the officers took, and I think it's important that I do that, I know some of you on the town council are, were here then, but I know Mr. Husband is new, and I think for the town people, I think, and also for the parents, the wives, spouses of those officers should really hear what they went through, because it's a little different being a civilian and going through police work. They don't hand out guns and badges and say, "Go do your job." It's important, and I look at from, I have two children that are police officers, and when you're a little bit worried about what they're doing out there, you want to know that they got the best training that they could get. And me reading this off, I think, really tells you that they did get the best training that they could. Over the last few years, the Municipal Academy and the State Police have kind of joined forces, and I think they've made it this, well, I think the Municipal Academy was a great agency to begin with, I think the corroboration there has made it better, it's made it more military-oriented, and I'll read to you the courses. This is in alphabetical order, what I find most valuable, in my opinion, is the officer's survival and safety courses that they took. Accident Investigation, Amber Silver Alert, Aviation Investigation, Bad Checks and Credit Card Fraud, Rilets, BNE Investigations, K-9 Investigations, Civil Liability of Police Officers, Commercial Enforcement, RMS Training, Computers, Computer Crimes, Bullying, Constitutional Law, Court Arraignment and Procedures, Courtroom Testimony and Demeanor, Criminal Identification Units, Criminal Law and Statutes, Death Notifications, Culture and Diversities, which incorporates racial profiling, Defensive Tactics, 65 hours, Domestic Highway Enforcement, Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Training, Food and Drug Investigations, Emergency Vehicle Operations, Evac, which is basically traveling safely and at high speeds, Field Training Program, Firearms and Shotguns, 80 hours, Homeland Security, Homicide and Suicide Investigations, Identity Theft, Insurance Fraud, Interview and Interrogation, Laptop Instructions, Law of Evidence, Military Courtesy/Drills, Missing Children, Motorcycle Street Gangs, Narcotic Investigations, Note-Taking, Officer Safety, 70 hours, Organized Crime, Police Ethics, Police Shooting and Survival, Police Shooting Investigations, Professional Standards or Internal Affairs, Public Relations and Courtesy, Public Speaking, RITT Procedure, Mock Trials, Radar, Laser Operation, Report Writing, Riot Control, Civil Disturbances, Rollover Simulator, Search and Seizure, Search Incident to Arrest, Sexual Assault Investigation, Sexual Arrestment, Special Weapons and Tactics, Field Sobriety Test, Stolen Motor Vehicles, Terrorism Training, Traffic Direction Control, Traffic Summonance Procedure, Use of Informants, Undercover Operation, Use of Force Continuum, Weapons of Mass Destruction, White Collar Crime, and numerous and numerous hours of physical training. This is what, some of what they went through, and this is what you hear from me. Every officer remembers the day they went into the academy, and the rest is pretty much a blur, because you're going 100 miles an hour with your hair on fire. They're learning a lot of things on the way. But that's not the end of their training, the end of the training never ends. You come on to the Police Department, you come on to Hopkinton Police, and you're now assigned a field training officer. And I want to thank first Detective John Forbes, took the bull by the horn, started the process on the last two officers that went through, and he incorporated, we chose Patrolman Lambrix and Patrolman Nutting, both very good officers, to be their FTO officer. They get nothing for it, other than the fact that they're training another officer to be a better officer, and that is approximately a six-week process. Right now, they're in the fifth week, we're assessing now whether after the sixth week, they're ready to go on their own. That doesn't mean the training stops, then they'll be shadowed, and basically the training never stops. It doesn't for me, and it shouldn't for them as well. So these are some of the things that they have learned there, but it's an ongoing process. Law enforcement changes daily, so we must adapt as well. Now, I just kind of give you a little background on the two officers before we swear them in. I'll start with Alexander Valanas, he's 21 years old, he's single, he grew up in South County, he graduated from South Kingston High School in 2009, played varsity lacrosse while he was there. Shortly thereafter, he, after graduating, he went on to CCRI and took up criminal justice courses. He also knew he wanted to be in law enforcement, so he joined the military, and he joined the Rhode Island Air National Guard where he became a air transportation specialist. He has approximately a year and a half left to serve on that, and in law enforcement, we always look at military because of the fact that we're paramilitary favorably when we look for officers that have applied. He, out of his hobbies, basically working out five days a week and enjoying being single, I guess. He's here with his parents, John and Kerry Valanas, and his grandparents, Mr. and Mrs. DeWolff. And to give you a little synopsis on Jonathan Reeve, he's 25 years old, he is married to his wife Justine, they reside in Warwick. He graduated from Hendrickan, Bishop Hendrickan, in 2005. He was a four-year hockey varsity player, where he was, in the senior year, was the captain, all-division and all-state, fairly impressive. He also went on to CCRI and started taking courses in CCRI in basically the same fashion, wanted to get into the military, because he wanted to get into law enforcement, and he joined the Rhode Island Army National Guard in 2007. In 2010, he was deployed to Afghanistan where he saw combat. He was discharged in June, he's still currently on the books over there until, for another Earlier in the day, I asked him what his hobbies were, and I said, and I remembered during the academy graduation, I remembered his wife was pregnant, and I said, "So besides working out, you might as well forget every, all your other hobbies now that you're going to be having kids, your hobby will be trying to find sleep." With that being said, I'd ask Ms. Cook to swear in the officers, and officers, if you want to come up and get sworn in, please.
(inaudible)
That's fine, yeah. Both are here.
Do you, Alexander V. Valanas and Jonathan M. Reeve, solemnly swear that you will support and preserve and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of Rhode Island, that you will well and execute your duties and you, officer, to the best of your ability, faithfully and impartially enforcing all laws and ordinances, valously guarding the constitutional rights of all persons and promptly obeying yours, of course, officers appointed over you, all in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Hopkinton Police Department, so hope you're back. Good. Thank you.
I failed to mention that also that joining Jonathan Reeve is his parents, William and Christina Reeve. I'll just finish this with, basically, you know, I have, you know, I've still got some friends at the State Police, and I critique the two officers while they're going through there, and they all, they raved about the two officers, they did very well in the academy. Jonathan actually had received the Raymond Shannon Leadership Award while he was there. I think that's one of the revered awards that they give out, it's given out by the peers, the ones that vote for the award, so the officers did very well there, and speaking to their FTO officers, they raved about them. So I think what we've found is a round peg in a round hole, and if I'm going to give any type of advice to the officers here, is that we as police officers, I think we join the police department, you look for the thrill of the fight, going after the real bad guy, but you end up finding out that a lot of what you're doing is not necessarily going after the real bad guys, is that you're dealing with good people most of the time, especially here in Hopkinton. Unfortunately, sometimes you're dealing with people that, they're good people, but they having a bad day, and so what I ask, that they have empathy and compassion to the people that they serve, but at the end of the day, you go home. And I wish them well, and congratulations.
Welcome to Hopkinton.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Yeah, okay, yeah, we can take a five-minute recess, please. Okay. Next on our agenda is the decision regarding zoning ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance language amendment. Render a decision regarding a zoning ordinance amendment to the zoning map and zoning ordinance language amendment. Petitions are filed by Christine Austin and Amy Vashon, doing business as the Kids Co. for property located at 1111 Main Street, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, property owned by the Phoenix Group, 2 Williams Street, Providence, Rhode Island. Identified as Possessor's Platte 28, Lot 133, Neighborhood Business Zone, with uses limited to real estate offices or professional offices. The applicants request an amendment to the August 5th, 1985 Town Council decision that approved a limited use zone change in a neighborhood business zone. To include a daycare center as permitted use together with the previously approved uses of real estate office and professional offices. And the applicants request a language amendment to Section 5 District Use Regulations to include a daycare center designation as specified below, and to request a language amendment to Section 5A Groundwater and Wellhead Protection Ordinance to create a land use category of daycare center also specified below. The petitions are filed in accordance with Chapter 134, Section 16 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hopkinton as amended, heard on June 3rd and June 17th, 2013. Okay, applicants present, I see, okay ladies. Yes, Barbara, you want?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, so we'll do the motion and then discuss it. I move that we adopt the ordinance amendment proposed by the Kids Company amending the district use tables of Chapter 134, Paragraph 5, to add a new use category of daycare center as U-758, and ask that the text of the amendment itself be published in full in the minutes at this point. This amendment will create a new use of daycare center town-wide as a right in neighborhood business and commercial zones, allow it with a special use permit in RFR-80 and RES-1 zones, and prohibit it in manufacturing zones. Opera for protection permits will not be required in both the primary and secondary Opera for protection zones. The council finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, bears a reasonable relationship to the public health, safety, and welfare, and is in the best interests of the community based on the following: One, the planning board has recommended passage of the proposed new use category. Two, the building official testified that he supports the addition of the proposed use category to the district use tables, and that it is compatible with other uses in the identified zones. Three, testimony before the council established that the proposed use of daycare center, which is not presently represented in the district use table, is one that has become increasingly needed in Hopkinton, and will be a benefit to the people living in Hopkinton and other areas. Four, the use is compatible with existing uses in both the neighborhood business and commercial zones, and may be compatible with some RFR-80 and RES-1 locations, as will be determined by the zoning board in connection with applications for special use permits for those zones. Five, the use is a non-noxious use that will not adversely affect the uses that might exist around it in neighborhood business and commercial zones, or in those residential zones in which the zoning board might allow it. And six, the proposed change is consistent with the authority reserved to the council under the comprehensive plan to identify those areas in town where such uses are appropriate, and to identify the conditions under which uses may exist. This is particularly true where a use such as that proposed is not specifically represented within the district use table. The proposed change will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the town, and is in the best interests of the community.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, council discussion. Scott?
Yes, I'm going to hold off, but I do have some concerns. I believe that this is something that we need in the area, clearly within the whole valley area, it already exists. My concern is that that is going to be located in an area on the Hope Valley waterline. The town has a responsibility, which it hasn't fulfilled, to have a wastewater management committee, which we don't have. And also, what I'm concerned about is a couple of things, and I like to see other members of the council address that, is neighborhood business zones, by their very nature, and the information presented to the council, work that I know Counselor, Council Vice President Thompson presented, was that neighborhood business zones are very small in acreage. I think I've seen some little over an acre, some a lot less than an acre, and some were combined with RF-80, from the information, that was in our latest council packet. Also, that region, maybe not that specific site, but that strip in Hope Valley, has had septic problems in that area, and the question from me is, if the town council is required to look at public health, safety, et cetera, how well are we fulfilling that? So I'm just interested in some input on that. I think that we, the need is definitely there for that type of business in the town, and also, I'd like to see somebody address the neighborhood business, because it's on small parcels throughout the town, and things of that nature, so I'm ready to listen.
Okay, Scott, thanks. I guess, in reading our packet, I know there was some information that Counselor Thompson had put in regarding lot sizes, I think there was, what, 36 neighborhood business zones, or properties in our Hope Valley Village, and this particular parcel, I think, if my memory serves me, it's about an acre, and it was the eighth largest of the 36, so I'm not so sure there was really a smaller lot of the group, but as far as I know, that's what I saw, but I can't comment on the wastewater, because I don't really know. What's before us on this particular motion is the use, putting it in as a district use, okaying it as a district use, putting in the district use table, so I know Counselor Thompson has her info, and you can...
Let me start?
Sure. Go ahead.
Back in the early 90s, actually late in the 80s it started, and back then, we were working, the town was working on the Hope Valley area and studied it, there was an environmental review team that was gathered together, and they studied the issue of water and the quality of it, and dealt with septic. So as we know, the waterline was eventually installed in the 90s, and I know your property is, or your property you're looking at is one of the customers of the waterline, so obviously, at some point, in order to hook up to the waterline, you have your septic inspected, et cetera, so there are little things you go through in order to tie into the waterline. So we know at some point that was done. The data on the parcels, it's, you're correct, it's almost an acre, this particular parcel is .9 acres, and there are a number of properties that are very small, and when I said small, I didn't, I wasn't really sure until I looked, and we've got one, the second one on our list here, it's .09. So we've got a number of properties throughout town that are practically, well, this one's less than a tenth of an acre, and we have others that are very small, we have others, some of them, there's one that's almost, that's almost two acres. So there are a couple of those, but anyway, my concern is with the smaller ones, and what I'd like this council to do, and I've gathered from the discussion, I can see that the council wants to move forward with this and give you folks what you want, I can only plead with the council and try to get you to at least put an S there, and have it go before the zoning board. I'm very concerned about these properties, the ones, if we're going to allow this sort of thing town-wide in neighborhood business, that means these properties, and to then just assume and hope that, oh, well, we don't have to worry about it, because DEM will, you know, they'll either be able to put a septic on it, or they won't. I don't like to rely on somebody else to do what you think they might do. I talked to DEM, and I talked to the department that, the ISDF section, On-Site Wastewater Now, but I talked to that department, and actually, ended up talking to the very person who is going to be the one who will look at your proposal and see if it's suitable or not. And I talked to him about what was happening in town, and I asked him what it was that we could expect from his department, and that department, because of budget cuts over the years, all they do is permit, and they'll permit for septic, and they'll look at the flow, and they'll do suitability, and that's all they do, they don't, they don't get into maintenance, or any of that, all of the things that we relied upon them to do in the past, they don't do. And his comment was, "Well, we've been working with Charleston and Westerly on this very issue, maintenance and things like that." And I said, "Well, we don't have that in Hopkinton, we just don't have the staff." But anyway, way back when, in the 90s, the wastewater management district was established as one of the prerequisites for the waterline, and we had to put that in, and because of our own staffing issues, or lack of volunteers, it never, it never was implemented. So since then, of course, I've talked to the manager and solicitor, so that we can move forward with the wastewater management district, because if these proposals are going to come in, it's wise for the town to, we're just going to have to enforce these sorts of things, because DEM's not going to do it, so we're going to have to. However, I would hope that the council would consider putting an S there, and it's not too, I know it's another hoop they have to jump through, but these lots are small, and I'm not, I'm not talking about a half acre, a quarter acre, we're down to a tenth of an acre, so I don't think that's the right thing to do in that area, or townwide. So that's my, my big concern is that.
I would like to say to support, because of, we have a responsibility to public safety and health, that the council has a responsibility, considering the nature of the property, that in knowing that these neighborhood business areas are very small, and considering the history of Main Street and Hope Valley in that area, I'm not saying that specific property, I think we need a special use permit. Counselor, Council Vice President Thompson makes a motion, I will support that, as opposed to putting in a special use permit.
I move that we amend the motion to put an S for the... I'll move that we amend the motion to put an S for the, in the district use table.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, Barbara, who goes first?
You're discussing on the motion now.
Okay.
I'm sorry, on the amended motion.
On the amended motion.
Whether or not to add an S? Yes.
My discussion is actually about the entire motion. However, since we're only doing it on Sylvia's motion, I am still in favor of the neighborhood business and commercial zone by use, by right. I think this is one of the most innocuous uses known to man. I think it's fabulous to have small children. I think they make neighborhoods safer, because people are always there and always looking. I think that this kind of business is to be encouraged, is to be welcomed. I think there can't be any nicer kind of business in a neighborhood business zone than a daycare center. I have had my children in daycare since they were born, and I have three boys, and I have always worked. And daycare centers are everything from an eighth acre, tiny, tiny lot, to several acres. They function beautifully, they function wonderfully. There are fabulous human beings that teach these children and take care of them. They are always safe. The police know exactly where the children are, and the daycare centers, because often their children are in it, too. I see absolutely nothing, under any circumstance, wrong with that. They do not use, have a use of water, nobody takes showers. They may have dishwashers, that does happen on occasion on a larger, on a larger use. Under, under no circumstance do I want to make you jump through another hoop. I never want daycare centers to have to jump through hoops. I don't want adult daycare centers to jump through hoops. I think that it is a marvelous use of neighborhood business, whether you end up here or not, in this zone, or in this building or not. I think that what you've brought forward is extremely valuable to Hopkinton and all of the surrounding region, and neighborhood, and the entire Cherahood District. I also think, continuing, that one of the ways we get rid of homelessness is when both parents work. When both parents work, they have to have daycare available. And if they aren't, their daycare centers, to help them, they are not going to survive. So all of this idea of we need to solve homelessness by putting people in homes where they cannot put their children somewhere in order to work, is to me totally ludicrous. These are absolutely necessary areas for us to address as a town, for working people, and in a business area.
For working people, and I couldn't hear you at the beginning.
And a bit, and just for business people.
Thank you.
I am happy to have it as a daycare center is by right in neighborhood business.
Ms. DeHusman, I wish to comment just on the Sylvia's amendment, making it a special use permit versus by right.
Let me ask Pat a question. Pat, I wanna make sure I'm correct on this. Adult daycare centers are permitted in neighborhood business zones?
We don't have those yet.
No.
I mean, we've got a family.
Well, we don't, whether we have them or not, are they, adult daycare is permitted, but daycare for children is not? Is that a whole argument, beat it?
We don't have a category for adult daycare right now.
We don't have a category.
We've got a family, a family sort of thing, but we don't have a specific one for adult daycare.
Okay. I've lived in Hope Valley for over 30 years. I remember, back in '78 to '79, a real problem with polluted wells in Hope Valley. Absolutely, to the point that I believe RICAP came in and went around to polluted wells and poured bleach down the wells to try to cure it. And it obviously didn't cure it, because the problem was, it wasn't so much the wells were bad, it was the septic systems that were 50 feet away, or whatever. I also believe, as I remember, that most of the pollution was in the downtown, if you wanna call it downtown area of Hope Valley, right down in the center of Hope Valley, up on the hill. And it wasn't so much, it wasn't so much that the water was, was bad. It was bad because people didn't maintain their septic systems. They didn't pump them for years. Some people didn't pump them forever, they just, they were put in in 1955, and they never got pumped again. So that was the problem. And eventually, they just failed. And because they failed, the adjacent wells failed. Thank goodness, the waterline came into Hope Valley. Now, I am concerned, and from what I read in my packet that Sylvia provided me, Councilwoman Sylvia Thompson provided me, I can't, I can't imagine putting 20 children in a building that's on one-tenth of an acre or less. And there are such things here. There's are such acreages and properties in Hope Valley. But that doesn't mean that it would be bad for something that's almost an acre. I think that this, I've gotta believe that the septic system that goes with this building is relatively new, and it's been maintained. I've gotta assume that. I'm a little concerned about whether, and I know, I know where the building is, and I know where Wood River is, and you're about 250 yards from the river. I don't think you're gonna have an effect on the river unless the system fails, and when it fails, you're gonna know it fails. Septic systems aren't set up like that to pollute things that are within 250 yards away. So I do think, though, that because there are, in neighborhood businesses zones, there are extremely small lots, and I can't imagine a blanket use of these lots for daycare, you know, if you've got a .9, .09, .11, .11, .12, I can't imagine putting 15 or 10, even 10 kids into a, into a building there, and expecting the septic system and the wells to be okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree, I like to see this used, this, I like to see you in there, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's gotta go in there, though, as a special use.
All right, well, I don't think it should be a special use, that's my thoughts. We've heard from our planning board, we've heard from our planner, we've heard from our building and zoning person, and it's all in, it all conforms to the comprehensive plan, and I don't think they should go through an extra step. The only thing I'll wanna comment, and have maybe Brad Ward, our building person, come up to the podium, I realize that some of these business, neighborhood business lots sizes are very small, but I guess maybe, Brad, you could comment on, on that piece of it, on what the concerns have been up here tonight, as far as, you know, the way I look at it, you still have to have a suitability test through DEM, you still have to go through zoning, you still have to go through all these stopgap measures, and if it's not gonna conform, and I think also the building size matters on how many people are fit into a building. You know, I think this particular building can only fit X amount of people based on the square footage. So I don't think our concerns are really a concern, when you drill it down and say, geez, this house, or this building is small, it's on a very small lot, you can have 20 kids. I don't think that's the case. So I think we're missing the vote on that particular part of it. So maybe, Brad, if you can comment on some of the smaller neighborhood business lot sizes within the Village of Hope Valley, on your, give your expert opinion on what your thoughts are on that, based on the building sizes and whatnot.
I wouldn't think that having it as a permitted by right would impact the smaller lots to that degree, because they also need to get a license through DCYF, and DCYF does mandate that they have playgrounds. So if they don't meet the criteria right off the bat for DCYF, they're not getting their license for under 20 people. They do need enough room for outside activities for the kids, that's a requirement under the licenser, and I'm no expert on DCYF procedures, it's just been my interference or involvement with these type projects in past experience. If that is a case, and perhaps you could ask Ms. Buckley then, if maybe you could say that it's permitted by right with a half acre or more, and then anything less would require a special use permit. So I don't know if there could be a two-tiered system that would accommodate, because clearly, they have enough room here for this use to go forward, and that it is a good use of the other project. I won't be able to issue a permit if it is with a special use permit until the end of August, at that point in time. And I realize this isn't your burden, but they do wanna be open in September, so that would be a problem. The septic system, I don't have any concerns with, because that is, does require an SSD, it is a sign-off, they do look at the flow rates that are existing within the building, and they will chart those out with known flow rates with other daycares, and they'll limit the number of children or such, to that degree. So...
Yes, Steve.
Brad, tell me, if it's a permitted use, neighborhood business-wide, no special use, permitted use, and somebody comes in on one of these very small lots and says, I wanna set up a daycare, for example, I wanna stick my 15 or 20 kids in there on a 1 point, a .17 acre lot, what control, what control do we have to say, ah, it's not gonna work, we can't, we're not gonna allow you to do this? Do we have the power, do we have the power to say that?
Okay, yes, there are a number of parameters that come into effect, and one that, a hurdle that the applicant is currently doing within the building code, that if it is a two-story structure, you can't put that use in unless you meet certain either rating criteria or separation, which is very hard to get in a type 5B construction, which is wood, essentially like this, and, or it requires sprinklers, and those sprinklers would have to be put in per NFAPA standards. So, and that's a heavy cost, a burden to bear, or they have to go for a variance. And if the lot is real small, I can't see the building official, myself, or anybody else in this capacity, ever endorsing it and approving that variance at the building code authority. This situation is ideal for this particular use, I believe.
Do we have any control over water flow, for example, out of the well? In other words, you have to have so many gallons per minute. Do we have any control, can we tell them, uh-uh, the septic system on this .17 or whatever it may be, or .2 acre lot is just not gonna handle 20 kids, or 15 kids, or even 10 kids? Do we have that kind of control?
We don't, but we could actually, at the permitting process, mandate that they have an engineer evaluate the well to that, and certify that it will provide the amount of flow to accommodate the use as a daycare center. In addition, on a small lot, you're going to have the well probably within 100 feet of the septic system, if it is serviced by a well, and therefore, I don't believe that they'll even get through that criteria through the licensing of DCYF.
What really bothers me also is that if there's a .17 lot, the person wants to put a daycare on, I'll bet you dollars to dimes there's a .17 lot next door, next door to it. And if their septic system fails, they can pollute the well next door. So I want some control over being able to say no, if somebody wants to put a daycare center on a .27 or whatever it may be.
Well, there are other alternatives, too, since you're really concerned about wells, is that you could actually put it that it's permitted where serviced by public water, and that would limit the number of neighborhood businesses that you have, and buy special use permit outside of that category. So you do have ways to manipulate the table, and I think Ms. Buckley could ascertain that, and give you more guidance in that regards, on how you could do that. But I have seen those in other district use tables, where there are limitations based upon the services available.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to make an amendment, an amendment to the amendment. I would take my original...
One second, Barbara. I just wanna ask Pat about the couple suggestions that Brad had made about lot size, or what your thoughts are on that.
You can do either of those things, if you want.
I can't, I just can't hear.
Pat, I guess we got for that.
I'm hearing Mr. Leno.
You can do either of those things, it's up to you.
Okay.
I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, and the amendment will create a new use of daycare center townwide, as of right, in neighborhood business and commercial zones, as long as the property is over one-half acre in size.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second that, okay.
You want discussion on that?
You want discussion on the amendment, on the amendment? Go ahead.
If you're gonna do this, and you wanna get this business going, then you wouldn't say half acre, why don't you make it .9? You know, why does it have to be so small? Because the acres along, these lots along here in Hope Valley, of course, we know there is a waterline, so when the planning board sees waterline, the planning board, as far as the size is concerned, a quarter acre, it's too small. And the planning board in the past has allowed for, and approved, and gone forward with proposals, or should I say, supported and made motions that supported the applicants that were before them, and used even smaller lots than this. And we're going, for instance, to have the women's development housing tie into the waterline. Because there was water, they were gonna jam in how many? It was like 30-some in this little acreage. So you'd be surprised at what you can do, or what will go through certain levels of government, whether it's planning board, DEM, or whoever. And the lots get smaller and smaller, because there's magically a waterline, so now we can go even smaller. And I disagree. We have to think about the amount of, there's another thing to think of, when you have small lots, and we know the issue in Hope Valley, how small they are, when you have a waterline, you're bringing, and we already know there's a high-water table, you're bringing in more water from Richmond, so more water's coming in, the more people that tie in, and this is life, they need, they want that water, on these small lots, but we're bringing in more water from an outside source to an area that's in a floodplain and already a high-water table. So when you make this, this second amendment, I think we ought to just, we don't have to worry, we'll have all the controls we need when we have an S. And a quarter acre or half acre is just too small. And I would ask anyone here, or, as Councilor Capalbo had said, she knew of a lot, or knew of lots that were somewhere, that were a quarter acre, that had daycare, and I'd love to know where they are, if they don't have sewers. If they have sewers and water, it's entirely different. It's entirely different. You can have small lots.
Okay.
So it's very difficult to have small lots and do the kind of activities that are being proposed, for instance, this new one, I believe the state will allow for 10 gallons for children. They, if they're gonna do a suitability, they will, they, for instance, with adults and employees, it's 15 gallons per day, that's how they figure out how much you can have. And that septic system that's on the property is from 1989, which is fine, and they'll allow for 10 acres per child. So we got 20 children, times 10. So you, I mean, all of that is, you know, it's starting to pollute my brain when I start thinking about a half acre. It's just too small.
There are 26 properties over a half an acre in Bradford, Ashaway, and Hope Valley. Only 26 out of these three pages over a half an acre. And there are 12 of them in Hope Valley. 12, over a half an acre. And you can easily do a daycare in half an acre. My home is on a half an acre. I have plenty of room, plenty of water, plenty of septic. There are not that many. We cannot special use everything that comes in front of us because Hope Valley is afraid of its waterline. You are, in that case, doing a disservice to Ashaway and Bradford. This is getting ridiculous. Every time we turn around on anything that's business, we are stopped in Hope Valley because of a waterline that has people who did not take care of their septic. They did not do the work they're maintaining that they should have done. And it is becoming a problem for the rest of the entire town of Hopkinton. I find this extremely problematic. My motion was such, to keep this as by right, and there are only 26 properties over half an acre in all three towns. 12 are in Hope Valley, and most of those are over one acre. There's a .53 in two, and the rest are .87 and above, up to eight acres. This is not a way to be business-friendly if everything is brought down to Hope Valley's waterline problem. If we need more water, then we need to address that. But I don't think we need to do it... If we need more water, then we need to address that, but I don't think we need to do it every time by turning down businesses, because, oh my God, it might be in Hope Valley. That does not make for Bradford and Ashaway becoming vibrant little towns again, instead of basically dead.
Thanks, Bob. Scott, you want to comment on the amendment, to the amendment?
I understand the proceedings. First of all, I think we have to establish, in fact, we don't have municipal sewage, and I know Counselor, Council Vice President Thompson brought that up, but I do have a question, because everything, and our testimony on this project has been about neighborhood business, and now I see an amendment proposed, including commercial area, and I don't recall in our information the size of commercial properties, because you are actually expanding the ability to have this type of activity also in commercial, but I believe that was part of your motion. So why should the council entertain voting for something in another type of zone because we don't know how much commercial property we have? I think, I could see where it would make sense to have it commercial, I mentioned at a previous hearing that I can understand why you would have it manufacturing, but the fact of the matter is, as far as this motion goes, this council has a responsibility, and everybody addresses that differently, I realize that, to maintain the public health and safety. And when you make a decision for the town of Hopkin location, should be part of that decision, as well as the features of the property. So I know the history of that area, I know it's, and I think, obviously, it's accessible to 95, I think that's the biggest thing in its favor, but I'm not going to vote for this because we didn't really flesh out the extent it should be under commercial. The testimony that we've been hearing is under neighborhood business, not commercial. So just on that alone, I'm going to vote against that amendment.
David, one more comment.
Go ahead.
The last little thing I should mention is the issue of pharmaceuticals. Septic systems are engineered to treat sewage, and when it comes to drugs, pharmaceuticals of all sorts, they now know, because they've studied it, I mean, you don't think of these things, I guess it's common sense, but they have studied it, and they're finding that you're drinking your neighbor's prescriptions. It comes up, and all they have to do, it's in public water systems, and it's in our well water. So the smaller the lots, the smaller area that the pollution runs around. So, and Hope Valley did not, I believe that the towns have a responsibility to make good decisions, and they weren't great decisions when they allowed small lots in Hope Valley, but that was a long time ago, and they didn't know back then. So I don't see it as the property owner's fault, it's just one of those things that they didn't know, and I'm hoping that we know more now, and we'll make good decisions. I'm all done.
Okay. I think it's a nice compromise, looking at some of the small lots in neighborhood business, to amend the initial motion to include a half acre. I initially wasn't going to go for that, but it doesn't affect our applicants, and I am a pro-business person, I will not be shy about saying that. I think this type of atmosphere that has been put forward, has put this town behind the eight ball in terms of growing the tax base, although it's going to be incremental in this case, but I think it needs, we need to send a message out to the communities that we need to, that will, businesses are welcome, and that's the bottom line. So we've got an amendment to the amendment, and I need to make, we need to vote on that.
Basic amendment to the amendment.
Let me just clarify what you're voting on. The original amendment was to change the use as of right in a neighborhood business to require a special use permit. The amendment that you're voting on is going to defeat that motion, is going to defeat that amendment, and substitute for it an amendment that will make a half acre the limit for this use in a neighborhood business zone, okay? So if you vote yea for this amendment, you're voting to substitute this for Sylvia's S. Everybody got it?
Got it.
Okay. If you vote nay, you're voting for leaving Sylvia's amendment undisturbed.
On the floor. Just on the floor, not approved.
Yeah, you haven't voted for that motion yet, you're just voting to leave that amendment out there. So a yea will defeat Sylvia's amendment, a nay will keep it alive.
David?
Yea.
Barbara?
Yea.
Yes for me?
No.
No.
Okay. Got three yeses, motion passes, two noes.
Now what you've got before you is the amendment itself, which is to amend Barbara's motion to require that neighborhood businesses have a half an acre in order to have this use. Okay? And then you vote on the main motion itself, after you vote on the amendment. So this would be to amend, to add a half acre requirement.
David?
Yea.
Barbara?
Yea.
Frank, yes?
No.
No.
Okay.
Now you've got...
Motion passes, three yes and two noes. Yes, Pat.
Okay, now you've got the main motion, which is Barbara's motion amended to include the half acre requirement.
I thought we just did that.
I thought we just did that.
No, you voted to amend Barbara's motion, now you've got the main motion.
Okay, David?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this for the half acre amendment, pro or contra?
No, you just did that.
And before we vote, if we could read that...
I'm not sure what I'm voting on then.
Yeah, let me just ask you, what you're voting on is the main motion, which is the motion that Barbara read, which has been amended to include a half acre requirement.
Can you read that Barbara's motion out loud? Did it include commercial?
This amendment will create a new use of daycare center townwide as of right in neighborhood business and commercial zones, and commercial zones if over one-half acre.
Can I comment?
Go ahead, Scott.
I'm going to vote against this. I wanted to make this happen, and I think that to include commercial zones is really out of place, because this whole focus on this testimony has been on neighborhood business. In addition to that, one does recognize the unique problems in that part of town, and I don't believe, and I like to respond to a comment made, that I don't believe that everything, every decision this council makes is determined by the area that's on the water line, but we do have an obligation on the public health and safety, and I wish there was something I could support, it was a special use permit, I'd be glad to vote for it, but it's not there, so I'm going to vote against it, and my apologies to the applicant. Thank you.
I just want to point out, Scott, I thought when we discussed it maybe one or two meetings ago, that you had brought up a good point about having a daycare in a commercial business, such as, you know, Hopkinton.
I believe I said manufacturing, if I remember correctly, but it could have been commercial, but I believe it was manufacturing, because I was thinking of a big employer, but the problem is that the information that we had and the whole thrust of this testimony on this issue has been based on neighborhood business. And we have in our package just information on the various, you know, neighborhood businesses and their sizes, we don't have that for commercial. And if this council...
That they'll be over half acre?
Makes decisions on commercial, which is throughout the town, we should have a little better information on how that would impact commercial, because there's some commercial areas you probably wouldn't want to have them, and others you would, so I'm going to vote against it. And I'm accountable to my vote, just like every, the other four of you.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Before we vote...
I think we're ready.
We're...
Hold on. Go ahead, Barbara.
The motion is neighborhood business and commercial zones of over a half an acre. I do not think that we need to figure out how many commercial areas we have in order to know that they'll be over a half an acre. Generally, daycare centers are in commercial zones, they are not generally in residential zones. That's how they generally work, because it's where you drop off your children in order to work.
Okay.
So the commercial zone is still over half an acre, and if it's good in neighborhood business, trust me, it will be fine in commercial. Not to mention, planning board still has things to say about it, and so does DCYF.
David?
I just can't believe all of a sudden I've got the word "commercial" in here. We have never discussed commercial, I don't know where the commercial zones are, I don't know whether they're, they're good for daycare or not, you know, in our town, I'm really bothered by the, by the, by the, by the commercial. I...
Well, I got maybe a solution. Is it possible to remove "commercial" from our motion?
Yeah, can we discuss "commercial"?
Yes, but I do want to clarify something, the way this was proposed, and has been before you, has been, with all of the zones spelled out, with it, if I, special use permit in the residential zones, or is it not permitted now?
No, it's not permitted.
Not permitted in the residential zones.
Right.
Permitted in neighborhood business, permitted in commercial, and not permitted in manufacturing. So, I mean, that's the way this was presented before you. Your planning board recommendation is based on the way it was presented before you, the recommendation that came from Brad, it was on the way it was presented before you. So this didn't suddenly jump out of nowhere, this is the way the amendment was presented to the council, it's what you've been considering. So I just want to clarify that, that didn't suddenly come out of nowhere.
No.
I wanted to say that by voting against this doesn't mean I'm anti-business. I voted for everything that's come before the council in the past, except that thing in Hope Valley once, back in the 90s. And then we ended up, and then we ended up with...
Or Spicer gas.
And I voted against Spicer gas, yeah, that's, that's two things. But, so sometimes I vote no, or somebody else might vote no, or somebody might vote yes, bottom line is, I'm sure you're going to have a great business, I don't know where it'll be, I suppose it'll be there, but I doubt it will be, because I don't, I don't know how you're going to, unless you have less kids, I mean, that's your problem. Anyway, that's your problem, but anyway, I guess the bottom line is, I've got the tone that just because somebody votes no, it's the same thing when you vote no against a school, you're anti-education, that's ridiculous. Not against businesses, they pay taxes in town, it's getting ridiculous. The only reason I've got a problem with this is because it's, is because I don't want it townwide, and the compromise is to have an S, so that's been decided, but I wish you well.
The compromise is having a half acre.
In my mind, no, that's fine too, that's another alternative.
I disagree with your comments, Sylvia, I think that we need to promote business, and I don't think that some of the comments up here have really been promoting business, that's my comment on that. So now let's take a vote on the motion, Barbara's initial motion. David? This, again, this has been the theme through, through planning board and Brad's motion about these other areas, and again, they still have to go through the...
Apparently, I just missed the commercial portion of it. Aye.
Yes.
Barbara? Yes?
No.
Okay, motion passes, three yes, two no.
Congratulations.
Oh, sir.
Thank you.
This doesn't have so much to do with them, as it does with townwide, now we're getting to all that has to do with them.
All right, this is the longer motion. I move that we approve the ordinance amendment proposed by the Kids Company to change the permitted use for the property located at 111 Main Street, assessor's map, 28 Lot 133, to allow use 758 daycare center at the property which is currently zoned neighborhood business special, and has two permitted uses, real estate and professional offices.
Barbara, I'm going to stop you right there, only because you said 111 Main Street, and it's 111 Main Street, I just want to make sure that's clear on the record.
Thank you, 1111 Main Street.
Thank you.
This amendment will allow the additional use of daycare center, together with the current two uses as established by the town council by zoning amendment change on August 5, 1985. There will be no change to the zoning classification, it will remain neighborhood business special, and the two other permitted uses will continue to also be allowed. The council finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, bears a reasonable relationship to the public health, safety, and welfare, and is in the best interests of the community based on the following. One, the planning board has recommended passage of the proposed addition of this use category as a permitted use for this property in a thorough and well-reasoned decision which we find extremely persuasive, and further noted that specific issues would be thoroughly vetted by that board during development plan review before them. Two, the building official testified that he supports the addition of the proposed use category as a permitted use for this property, and that it is compatible with the uses currently surrounding the property. Three, testimony before the council established the following. A, the applicants, Ms. Austin and Ms. Vashon, testified that they have been both involved with education and/or teaching for varying periods of time, they proposed to make use of 1,258 square feet, renovated with minimal interior renovations to approximately 1,400 square feet total, on the first floor of the building for their proposed daycare center, with an additional 40-foot by 50-foot play area to be created outside of the rear of the property, with passage to it from the building such that the children will not need to walk through the existing parking lot. They envisioned no change to the parking areas or to the lot, other than the play area and walkway. B, a maximum of 20 children is anticipated in two groups, morning and afternoon, with some overlap between them, there will be three staff members present at all times. Initially, the children will be in the three-to-five-year-old age group, but they anticipate incorporating younger children at a future time down the road. The facility will be open during Cheroo School hours to begin, but may be extended at a later point in time. C, there is presently a need in Hopkinton for a daycare center which will be a benefit to the people living in Hopkinton and the surrounding region. D, John Alvin, the applicant's expert planner, testified that the proposed use is appropriate for a neighborhood business zone, and that it is, in fact, a less intensive use than many of the other uses currently allowed in a neighborhood business zone. Further, the proposed use is consistent with the current uses in the surrounding neighborhood, and will not result in a change to the area that would be detrimental in any way. There are 14 parking spaces which will be more than sufficient, since they intend to have people pull in to drop their children off, or pick them up, and then turn around and leave. The small increase in traffic at the times of pickup and drop-off will not significantly impact the area. Further, as the applicants go through planning board review, they are amenable to working with the planning board to ensure good traffic flow in and about the property. Finally, Mr. Alvin testified that the use is compatible with the town's land use map and comprehensive plan. E, the testimony established that the proposed use is heavily regulated by the state, and that the applicants will be required to comply with all state licensing requirements for the proposed daycare center. F, no objections were raised by any abutters or other members of the public. G, an issue came up at the hearing relative to suitability of the septic system at the premises to handle the additional usage that will occur with this use of the property, but the building official indicated clearly that the applicants will be required to obtain a system suitability determination for the septic system from DEM before they can proceed. If the system is determined not to be suitable by DEM, they will not be able to proceed with their proposed use. Four, therefore, the council finds that the proposed change is consistent with the authority reserved to the council under the comprehensive plan, to identify those areas in town where such uses are appropriate, and to identify the conditions under which uses may exist. The proposed change will provide a benefit to the town of Hopkinton by making available a needed service in an appropriate location, and will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the town. It is in the best interests of the community, the proposed change is suitable to the character of the neighborhood, and is a non-noxious use. Five, as detailed by the planning board in its decision of June 5, 2013, which is incorporated herein by reference, the proposed use is in conformance with the provisions of the comprehensive plan outlined herein therein, including but not limited to encouraging development of residential uses, small businesses, and public facilities, in keeping with the predominant scale of a particular village area, creating opportunities for new office, commercial, industrial, and mixed uses in existing village areas, targeting specific types of businesses based on Hopkinton's quality of life and locational advantages, balanced with business requirements and impacts to the environment, as well as maintaining and improving the quality of education through traditional and innovative approaches, both public and private. Six, as conditions for the approval of this change, the applicants must, A, comply with all state licensing, building code, and other requirements, including obtaining a system suitability determination from DEM for the existing septic system; B, comply with all applicable Hopkinton code and zoning requirements as determined by the building official; and C, return to the planning board as that board has indicated in its written decision recommending the change for development plan review, and abide by that board's determinations.
Okay. Now, the motion made, second?
Second.
Council discussion. Scott, let's start with you.
Well, first of all, I stated my concerns, my thing is that...
My thing is that, as a councilman, you know, I'm winning and losing sides of any issue, and it's my obligation to enforce adoption policy of the town of Hopkinton regardless of what I think. Obviously, you do have some leeway. So, I'm inclined to vote for it. I've already stated my reservations about locale. And when you're on a council, some people love you, some people hate you, and some people are in the middle. But I'm going to be swayed pretty much what Councilor Thompson says, but right now, I'm inclined to vote for it. I stated my reservations about the townwide thing and that area in specific in the septic. But I'm concerned about the whole area, that whole strip. But I'll listen to what other people have to say, and maybe I'll look inconsistent, but I have to be at peace with myself, so.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Sylvia?
I have any comments?
Barbara?
No comment.
David?
Wonderful idea. Great for the community. Can't say more about it.
Yeah, I prepared some comments. I guess, you know, I want to just read a couple of prepared statements I have. First, the neighborhood business providing childcare for residents and taxpayers of our community. Adding a daycare use along with real estate and professional uses in neighborhood businesses by no means a stretch. Adding a daycare to... Excuse me?
I'm ready to all this stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't believe she's getting all that.
State professional use neighborhood business.
I'm sorry. I forget your writing things or typing things. Adding a daycare to the district use tables goes in hand-in-hand with the first decision of allowing a separate category. The town planner, planning board, and building inspector all agreed that this requested use conforms to the comprehensive plan. The plan that this daycare provides, a plan that this daycare provides to existing village areas targets specific types of businesses on Hopkinton's quality of life and locational advantages. My decision to support this was an easy one for the reasons stated above. Our decisions, if approved, would contain reasonable safeguards regarding the three main areas that any business would have to obtain wishing to operate in this location. First, the applicant has to present a development site plan to the planning board, which would include a traffic study. Second, the DEM suitability determination would have to be made regarding the septic and its conformity to the new use. And third, the state building code division would have to weigh in on the need for the fire suppression. Those safeguards are not our purview and rather contained in our motion. At the end of the day, our decision to promote some positive economic stimulation to our village of Hope Valley and the town of Hopkinton, it will not have any tangible negative effects on the village if stipulations are met on site plans and DEM suitability evaluations. Thank you. Okay, motion made in second. No more comment, folks? Okay, David?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Okay, we've got four yes and one no. Motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck on your next, on your further endeavors.
Good luck.
Thank you.
There are lovely places in Ashaway and Bradford, too, you know. Just in case.
Listen, don't take them out of Hope Valley. I like them out of Hope Valley.
I know. There are lots of lovely places.
They have daycare all over town.
Absolutely. I think that would be great.
Thanks, Brad.
Good night. And you get out of your home boiling water.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Wow.
Approved Town Council meeting minutes of May 6, 2013. Accept the June 3, 2013 transcript as the record of the hearing relating to the Kids Company. Executive session minutes of June 3, 2013.
I want them cool.
Approved petition of National Grid and Verizon for a joint poll location on Woodville-Alton Road, set August 5, 2013, as a hearing date for the Sandy CDBG DR application.
The transcript, I noticed a couple of things. Shall I just state what they are?
Are you pulling the transcript?
Yeah.
The June 3 transcript? And you're pulling also June 3 executive session minutes?
Yes.
I have a mild question. The approval of the National Grid, isn't that something we're discussing today?
It is.
And I don't think we can approve it on the consent agenda.
That's where it's listed.
But we haven't discussed it yet.
Yeah, you pull it.
All right. Thank you.
Did we get a motion, Lisa? I can't remember.
Approved Town Council meeting minutes of May 6, 2013, and set August 5, 2013, as a hearing date for the Sandy CDBG DR application.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's first, Scott? You had a comment on the question on the transcript?
Yeah, there was just a couple of errors. On page 45, 18, it's accept ACCEPT, a limited number two, and you're going to accept, and it's spelled E-C-E-P-T. I move that change. I know it's being picky, but if we're able to go, you know.
Can we change these things?
Since you're adopting it as the record of your hearing.
So, we can. Oh, okay, okay.
And the other thing is, under page 53, number of 24, it said polysite, P-O-L-I-S-I-T-E, sic. I say, I believe I said poly-site, which is basically just a reference to political science. It's just a...
We're acronym for...
With those two changes, I moved that the transcript be accepted.
Second.
Barbara, you, did you have a question or something?
No, not I did not.
I had some minor minutes.
We're not aware of a motion on the floor.
Motion was made, and Sylvia's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The May 6, 2013, I think there was just minor things that I told the town.
No, you said June.
Yeah, we just...
We approved those. June 3, you said you approved.
Okay, the executive session minutes of June 3.
You're just going to split that into two, right?
Yes. And it's supposed to be 2013, but the, there's one I'm going to abstain from, which is the first item of the last of that meeting in the second round vote.
Just do them to two different proofs, right?
Okay. Someone want to make a motion on the two separate executive session minutes? Please.
You mean the two separate topics?
Yes.
Two separate topics, because we only have...
They can split into two.
Can't you just abstain? Right. Just do whatever.
Just make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes of June 3, 2013.
Is there a vote of them?
I can list what those subject matters are.
Subject one and subject two.
Subject one would be respective litigation operators every day, council. That's the first one.
So, you need to make a motion to accept what she just said. Minutes.
So moved.
There you go.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
There you go.
And the next one was?
Make a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes of June 3, 2013, number two.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's how to get it going.
First, public forum.
No, joint poll.
Anybody out there wishing to be heard? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Bill. Yes, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun. I'm sorry.
I have no problems with the poll. I think it's great, and I'm so glad we're having another poll put in to support it. The more we can do before the hurricane season, the happier I am.
I would just like to comment that I'm aware that in the past, we've kind of, at least some of us have wanted to hold up them because of the double poll situation. I did read that I do support the polls, but it's, I mean, granting of this, but I would hope at some date that we remind them of the double poll situation in town. But I'm not going to hold it for that reason.
This really doesn't have anything to do with the double polls. When they refer to a joint poll, they're talking about National Grid and Verizon together. This is a separate auxiliary support poll.
Right.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the petition from National Grid and Verizon for a joint poll location on Woodville-Alton Road.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bill. First, public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? No? Okay. Town manager report, Bill McGary?
Thank you. During the last two weeks, with the cooperation of department heads and other employees, we finalized the 37 job descriptions for full-time and permanent part-time employees. They've now been written in a standardized and uniform format, and hopefully will be available for review on the town's website in the very near future. And lastly, working closely with Chief Dave Palmer and Town Solicitor Patricia Buckley, the police department implemented a new policy, a set of instructions, and a formal application for the issuance of concealed weapon licenses and permits, the policy of which went into effect on Wednesday, June 19 of this year.
Any questions for the town manager, folks? Bill, thanks for the permit, concealed carry permit application. See that policy. It's nice to see it in place. We'll chat about a couple comments I think I brought to your attention. We'll chat about it in later date, but thank you for that. New business, next on the agenda on the new business is the discussion of the Charter Review Commission. I kind of wanted to get this at least talked about by the council, because I think if anyone has read the town charter, there is a lot of aspects that perhaps need to be updated in various degrees. And I thought it was a good time, as we segue into the summer, to try and deal with some of these and formulate a new Charter Review Commission, set, you know, the guidelines on how many folks do we want on the commission, and so forth and so on. So, Lisa was kind enough, and Pat gave it to me as well, some rough guidelines for us to review on the commission itself, and I guess we'll open it up for discussion.
One of the things I had talked to the manager about some time ago, I think it was more than a year ago, was the idea of having, going to, for instance, department heads and asking them so that when, to give us their opinions on what, any problems they had with the charter. The more that we can provide to the committee, because this is a great deal to do, and I, and one of the things I'm concerned about is, and I think that would be one route to go, to kind of shorten up the work they have to do. I could see that there is so many different things and so many things that they could bog down in it. And what I'm hoping for is perhaps with the manager's help, and I know Lisa's worked within this, and she knows, and our solicitor knows of the problems, and finance knows of the problems. So, I think if we get a summary or some ideas from the folks who have been living it and knowing what's wrong, and we do, too, that we could put that together, and I think it'd be helpful for the council to see that also, because we might want to suggest some priorities. There might be some things that they could get done right away, and then the committee could continue. I don't see why we have to have it all done and have one vote. There might be some things, problems, real problems we could solve very quickly. And I think that if we could get the staff to help, it would help this committee. And I don't think we have to limit it to five or nine. I think we try to get people, good people, to come on, and whenever we think we've got enough good people, let's get it going.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's a good point. I did, I think I did mention it to Bill, too, that the town department heads would certainly know, based on their dealings with the charter throughout the years, even the clerk, you know, everybody knows what issues are there, and I think, you know, them jotting that down would certainly facilitate the whole process. But yeah, I guess we need to kind of talk about how many folks, I guess, we'd like to see, or I guess we'd have to advertise going forward to get some folks to at least apply, and then we'll have our interviews and all that stuff. But I know that it needs to be done, and I hope that we can get this going. It's going to be a priority of mine through the summer, so. Sylvia, you all set?
The last thing I would recommend is perhaps the people that have worked on it initially, and the people that worked on it the second time around, there's a few that are the same, but perhaps, Lisa, except for you, you're on the council, but maybe we could send a letter or notify those people any way we can, and let them know that we want the commission to start up again, and given that they were on it before, maybe they'd like to serve again. And I know Tom Buck was interested. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay. All right. Scott? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Barbara.
I really liked Sylvia's suggestion, too, about starting the Charter Review Commission and trying to solve some of the problems quickly, because some are, I think, relatively simple. Instead of trying to do everything as a whole, it was time-consuming and sometimes, I think, problematic looking at it as a whole, whereas there are things that can be changed, and it can be an ongoing process over the course of the year. I think that's a really good way of trying to handle a very big issue. So, I thank you for the suggestion. I'd certainly follow.
David, you want to? Okay. Scott, go ahead.
Well, since I'm nearly member of the council that was on the regional Charter Review Commission, I believe that I have nothing against input from the department heads, but that commission should be, whatever that commission, they can take counsel from any group of people they choose. It would make sense to talk to people who have to do the government on a daily basis, or different boards or commissions and things of that nature. But I would also hope that we would get the Democrat and Republican town committees involved. Very tough to motivate people and get them to be involved. I remember on the Charter Review Commission that I served on, and that was the only one we've had since the original Charter Commission, which I wasn't on, is the fact that I think we had one person over that applied, and when somebody resigned, that person was appointed. I do think that we should have it open-ended, but let the Charter Commission feel their way. There are other towns that do have Charter Review Commissions, and they can look at charters of other towns and see where we want to go. I think there's definitely need for improvement in the charter, particularly restricting the council on appointments to boards and commissions, because we do, the Waste Water Management Commission tonight is just one example where we could probably have some people double up. So, I think it's, definitely needs some changes, but I do think that we should set some advertisements and let them go in the direction they think they could have an initial meeting, get some feel from the town employees, and from maybe the council, and other boards and commissions in the general community. But I mean, I think a lot of times, you have to recruit people. Town council people have to be recruited. In this case, it depends upon how much interest there is, but I do think we should put an advertisement out, and the thing I really look forward to is removing that problem of dual committees, because I think it works against the interests of the town of Hopkinton, because sometimes you have a lot of interest, and other times the interest is very low. It goes in cycles. So, with that, I'll not say anymore. Thank you.
Scott, what did you mean about dual committees?
Well, I'm just saying is that the way the charter is, that you cannot appoint somebody to another committee unless you can't find somebody. There's some people you might feel not comfortable appointing to a committee, because you don't think you're a good fit, for whatever reason. Or they might not share your views, or whatever. You might have somebody on the Conservation Commission, but you're really stuck on putting somebody on the Animal Control Commission, for example, that might not meet as much. Or there's a Stark District Commission that meets only four times a year. I'm thinking about, I mean, I wouldn't think it'd be a good idea to be on two commissions that are really active all the time, but some of these smaller committees, you work, the way that the charter is, you might have somebody that applies and say, well, I don't really think this person's a good fit, or you might have to take them because of that rule in the charter. That's an impediment, I think, to this good government of Hopkinton. That's just one example.
Thanks, Scott. Lisa, how many committee members, and when were they last together? Do you know?
Pat knows. It's over five years.
Oh, yes. More than five years.
Okay, so we're due.
I would say there was about seven or eight.
Wow.
I agree. It might have been...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a date right here.
That's right. Sorry.[1783.23]
Eleven oh six. The more people you put on, the higher they form. That's the problem with having a lot of people.
I don't think we're going to have a lot of people apply. We'll be lucky if we get five, you know, but if they're good people, they'll do their job.
Exactly. And, you know, if we end up with seven or eight, that's great.
That's fine, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we want to advertise-
Yes.
-and put something on the website-
Yep.
-and contact the previous folks that have been on it before and see if they're willing to-
Hopefully they're still there.
...apply again. And then knock on Tom Buck's door to say, get your application in.
We have three pending.
Excuse me?
We have three pending.
For charter?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Wonderful. All right. Is Tom one of them?
How do we get pending applications?
Oh, so we have, so we, in a sense, we've got three, and then-
It's later on in the year.
Good, good, okay. Wonderful. All right.
Oh. All right.
That's nice.
And add, get something on the website-
Yep.
And send letters to them.
All right.
Okay. Anything else on that particular topic, folks? Okay. Next, Mr. Silva, please come up to the podium. I wanted to give the council just a quick heads up.
Absolutely. I remember we chatted at the last meeting I was here before, you guys. We talked about doing some status updates, and I'm here with some great news for all of you. We're doing quite well down the street. Actually, I have some numbers for you that I'd like to present you with. We are a nonprofit organization, so in a sense, we shouldn't really be generating any sort of profit. As far as the P and L goes, the profit and loss, we don't really do a profit and loss because we are a nonprofit. We do what's called a statement of financial income and expense. I'll just go through the highlights with you so far, and this is up to this month so far, year-to-date.
Dan, excuse me, do you have any copies at all?
I have one copy that I can pass around after I read it off if you'd like. Actually, you know what? Let's see. I think I might have two copies.
Yeah, make the copies. Yeah, if you give them to the clerk, we'll make the copies.
Absolutely.
Good. Just wait.
There you are. So you, as you will see when you look at that, we are showing a profit at this time of fourteen thousand dollars.
We've got to wait until Lisa comes back then. Oh, right. That's great. Yeah, Lisa will be back in a minute.
She's good.
Yeah, she's making copies, okay. I can wait. I also have a complete breakdown of as far as, we can't talk at all.
She takes the minutes.
She takes the minutes.
Sorry.
Lovely idea. I don't blame you. You want to go home.
I've had a long day.
Yeah, I know.
Daniel Silva, and I'm president of the organization.
Ashway Ambulance.
Don't run away after.
You did good. You were staying awake.
I know. There's a lot of information to process.
Sure is.
Hopefully, my spiel's going to be a little bit shorter and to the point, so. Don't have a ton of stuff to talk about, just figured I'd give you guys an update.
Just the good news.
Yeah, absolutely, which we have plenty of recently, which is a good thing.
That's nice.
I know you had another commitment, so I appreciate you coming.
My vice president's running our meeting, so it actually worked out fine. Not a big deal. Thank you. And this is as far up as to the end of April, and that's as far as our accountants reconciled with the bank at this point, so this is as current as it can be. So if you guys take a look, it says so far, our total income is fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-two cents, and below you'll see an itemized breakdown of exactly what we spent on what, leaving us in the green so far, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. And like I said, we're not really, we're not, we're a non-for-profit organization. We don't, you know, we're not really saying that this is a profit. That just shows us that we're this far in the green at this point. All that money's going to go back to, you know, trainings, uniforms, stuff like that, so it all stays within the organization. So if you guys want to look through and see if you have any questions on anything as far as the line items go.
Yes, please, Sylvia.
I want to ask you, right at the top, your income, patient revenue, for instance, do you have an idea of how that compares to, say, last year?
Um-
I was just wondering how you're doing.
Let's see.
I mean, that looks like a pretty good number.
Yeah, it is.
I haven't seen numbers like that.
Actually, let me see.
I mean, the bottom line is your expenses are less, so that's important.
Yeah, which is good. Let's see. For our expenses or for our total income?
Just that patient revenue.
Patient revenue. I was wondering about the patient revenue and maybe, and you could probably let us know, is that basically, is that dues?
No, patient revenue is solely what we make as far as-
Insurance?
Insurance, yeah. And then we have our subscriptions and stuff, which goes into a subscription line item and things like that. As far as patient revenue goes, that is just solely what we are reimbursed from the insurance companies, what we bill out. And unfortunately, looking at the numbers, because I do have two thousand and twelve here in front of me, at this point, we are at about eight thousand dollars less than what we made last year. We just don't have as many as expenses. That's why we're showing a little bit in the green this far, so far this year. And a big thing to, not to point blame or anything, but Obamacare, the way that Medicare is doing reimbursements, they've, I want to say it was seven hundred million dollars, cut towards ambulance reimbursements.
Oh.
So our billing company has told us over the next five, ten years, that we're going to see substantially smaller reimbursements as far as Medicare and Medicaid goes, up to twenty-five to thirty-five percent.
Oh.
So looking down the road, that's something to be, you know, a little problematic.
How do, when that happens, let's say, let's say it happens tomorrow, somebody calls-
It already happened.
Okay, it's already happening. You've got, let's say, a resident who's a member-
Mm-hmm.
-and they have Medicare, that's all they have-
Yeah.
-and you don't get reimbursed, what happens?
If they're a member of the organization, if they pay their forty dollars, we write it off.
Okay.
We don't try and collect, you know, we are an organization based on our members support us, we try and support them. If they pay the forty dollars and their insurance gives us zero, we write it off.
Okay.
So, wait a minute. So Medicare doesn't pay you anything?
Oh, I think she just said-
Of course it pays you. It pays you something.
You'd be surprised.
Well, I mean, but it doesn't pay you zero.
Sometimes-
No, I asked him what would happen if he did pay zero.
Sometimes they have paid zero. They said, you know, this person didn't require an ambulance, it wasn't medically necessary, we're not paying for it.
Okay, so I'm on, I would like, another question on patient revenue. I'm just staying on patient revenue. One of the problems that Ashway Ambulance had in the past, and I think you're actually solving it, which I'm very pleased about-
Thank you.
-is accounting and bookkeeping and billing and collections. And I do see that you have a professional area where you're now actually paying people to do this, so that it's done in a timely manner, because Medicare, healthcare, doesn't pay you unless it's timely.
True. Well, we have two separate, we have a billing company where we advance all the charts, you know, my crew members will do the chart, I go through, I'll do quality assurance, make sure, you know, that they acted and did what they were supposed to, and once it passes my stage and I give it the okay, we send it to the billing company.
And that's all done in a timely manner now?
It is, and we have a turnaround of three weeks max-
Okay.
-from the time of service to the time we're reimbursed-
Great.
-or luck thereof.
Because you were getting nothing.
Exactly.
And it was totally unacceptable.
And as well as an outside billing company, we have an outside accountant as well.
That's excellent.
Which assures that everything's done by the books in the most appropriate way.
That was the only question I had on patient revenue. I have others, but not on that.
Okay. Sylvia, do you have?
Almost there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Scott, do you have anything for Mr. Silva?
Yeah. First, I'm a subscriber to the Ashway Ambulance Corps. I would just state that, maybe, I think two of us are. The thing is that I know people will comment to me, and the Ashway Ambulance Corps is a private entity and we cannot direct you. The only politic the council really has is your budget, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, I think it's very confusing to a lot of people, probably-
We're a weird system in how, in which we operate.
Yeah, and, but what type of vision do you see for the organization? You know, I just was interested on, because we don't know the so-called Obamacare, where that's going to go-
Yeah.
...what the financial consequences are going to be. But when I just heard you say twenty-five to thirty-five percent, and considering-
Especially what we've already taken, you know, off the top. Like, I'll give you a, for instance, we had a cardiac arrest about a year ago. We got on the scene, patient was not breathing, had no pulse. We dumped, like, maybe twelve hundred dollars in medications in, plus payroll, plus fuel for the truck. I think we ended up billing out like twenty-three hundred dollars. Keep in mind, the gentleman was, is still alive and was discharged from the hospital about four days later. Medicare paid us seventy-three dollars for the run.
What?
Yeah. Whole reimbursement. That didn't even really cover the cost of fuel, you know? So that's why we are very, very thankful that we have your support as far as the town grants and whatnot go.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question, because any organization, particularly one that deals with serious money and obviously basically your volunteer organization, even though you do have paid staff-
You're subsidized, yeah.
Where does, have you had any, other than, I'm sure you have some short-term goals, but what is the goal of the Ashway Ambulance Corps, let's say, in the next five years? Because I know there's been a history, financial concerns with that organization over a period of years.
Yeah.
Where do you envision yourself in five years? And also, I'm just curious how many people in the Ashway area actually subscribe to the Ashway Ambulance Corps, and do you think you've gotten your notice, notices out conflict?
I'll respond to the second part of the question first. I would say that the community does now. We charge about forty, we charge forty dollars per subscription. Last year, we brought in just about fifteen thousand dollars in subscriptions. So if you divide that out by forty, I'd say that's a pretty, pretty good following.
You're about nine thousand this year.
Yeah.
Four thousand, two ninety-seven.
That's so far as of April, when our bank was reconciled last via the accountant.
Three hundred and seventy-five people, families.
Yeah, which, which is pretty good, pretty good chunk, yeah. So in reference to the first part of the question, where do I see this place in five years, is where I'd like to see it the next day and the next day and the next day. Our goal is to provide the best quality care and the best response in a timely fashion every day, whether it be tomorrow, whether it be five years from now. I'd like to see the organization continue in the right direction. I actually do have a call breakdown, too, of what we were dispatched to as far as nine-one-one calls versus what we've made, and for the year thus far, at this point, we're up seventeen percent of what we were at this time last year. Thus far, we were dispatched to two hundred and thirty calls, and that's nine-one-one, that's mutual aid to other towns when other towns request an ambulance from us. Of the two hundred and thirty calls we've received, we've made two hundred and seventeen. We are at eighty-five percent calls for the year, and even better, this month, for June, we were dispatched to forty-one calls, we made forty. We're at ninety-eight percent for June. So if we can continue at ninety-eight percent for the rest of the year, I think we're going to be looking pretty good. So I feel very confident telling you those numbers. We're quite proud of the membership, the way they're coming out, and everybody's been pulling together, which is, which is great.
Does the staffing help with those numbers, I imagine, right?
We have the subsidized paid crew, yep, which is between eight to four, Monday through Friday, we always have two people on, but this is the entire, I didn't break it down to what was paid versus what was volunteer, but this is the entire number.
Are you full-staffed, I guess, at this point, previously?
Yeah, we're full-staffed Monday through Friday. We always have two people on, eight to four. And then we've gotten really bent into, my chief is doing volunteer overnights, so we're, we're having people come down, we'll have full crews, nights, weekends, you know, aside from the subsidized pay for hours, we actually have been having full crews seven days a week, nights and weekends, yeah. The fact that I can come to you and say, you know, we only missed one call of, you know, that many, I personally feel great about it, so.
That's good.
And I'd have to say, since I've been there, I started at Ashway Ambulance, as just a volunteer driver about three years ago, I've never seen numbers like this personally. And I'm not biased because I'm the president, I'm just saying it like it is.
Appreciate the honesty. Yes, Bob?
I think, I'm going to change the topic on this, because the only time I get particularly complaints about Ashway Ambulance from citizens, it's, there is a, it's a non-response. Not the ambulance as a non-response, but phone calls as a non-response. And I have to say, I agree with them, because I have the same problem. When I've tried to reach you, I can call, I finally walk over, and I literally knock on the door or come upstairs and talk to someone, because I can't reach anyone by phone. Now, I know you guys are far more tech-savvy and cellphones and things like that, I'm not. I have a phone and I call you, and I can't reach you. I am given your phone number, for instance, personally, your cellphone, I can't leave a message. Your cellphone doesn't take messages. I, the problems that I see are now a public relations problem, because we can't reach anyone. I can't reach things for, for discussing the fact that you're going to be working with us at the Crandall for the Autumn Festival. I can't reach people. And what I want to just talk about, how was the subscriptions going, if I had a question on my subscription, I physically can't get hold of a human being without literally appearing on your doorstep.
Yeah.
And I think that's a real public relations issue.
I would agree with you. Absolutely. I'm sorry that you've had a negative experience.
And I don't know how you can help us solve that, or maybe there's a phone number that actually works.
Well, the number-
Well, actually, Dan, I know that I forwarded you the email anonymously, and it referenced, you know, the contact issues and not being able to, so, yeah, I appreciate if you could, you know, it was just a slight concern of ours.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I, I mean, I physically have had the same problem, I mean, personally, and-
I'll let him respond, Bob.
I, I know, I just want to say, it's not just that, that email, it's that I have the same problems, and I really do need to reach you on occasion.
Yeah. I know, on my personal behalf, I work three jobs and I'm going to school, I don't have my phone on me all the time. That's unfortunately just the nature of the beast in which I'm working with right now.
Well, if we can leave a message.
Yeah.
The message machine doesn't exist.
Yes.
So, I mean, your people at the, at the ambulance give me your phone number, but then I can't leave a message.
Sometimes my voicemail's full, sometimes my phone's off, and I do apologize about that, that is my fault. As far as contacting the station, that's, that's going to be an issue as well, because I personally pay people to be there eight to four, Monday through Friday. They should be answering phones, you know?
Right.
So that's, that's going to be something that I'm going to have to go back there and chat with them about, because I find that completely unacceptable as well.
Can you give me a couple of phone numbers so that I can pass those out when people-
We only have that one phone number, it's three-seven-seven-eight-three-one-two.
Eight-three-one-two, and, and basically, they really shouldn't try reaching you, which is understandable. I'm not, I'm not complaining about that.
No, I mean, I, I love to talk on the phone, I love to yield phone calls with, with whoever and whatnot, but unfortunately, my schedule right now does not permit me to answer the phone sometimes here and there.
Right, and I only expected to leave a message, but I couldn't do that. Okay.
David, okay. Does anyone else have any? Again, that's, that's one of the reasons why I brought you today.
Yeah.
I'm grateful that you were able to come by and just, yeah, maybe you can go back and talk to the folks, I guess, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
You saw the email.
I did.
And I blacked out who it came from, and, you know, I was just concerned that this, I don't want it to be a trend and a public service issue.
Yeah, absolutely. It will not be a trend, that is for sure. It will not be a trend, that is for sure.
So that's why, and I'm glad that your, your finances seem to be in order, so it's great, and I appreciate all that you do for the community.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, does anybody else have anything for Daniel? Nope, okay, thanks, Dan, I appreciate it.
Good job, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did you stay here until after we finished?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, under our new business, under our new business is consider setting a date to conduct boards and commission interviews. Lisa?
I know that we have done this on occasion, where you set aside a special meeting to conduct your interviews, and I didn't know you wanted to consider another date at this point. We have about six applications. We have a new applicant for Charter Commission as well. There were two other individuals who had applied, who lived in the last year. One individual was interviewed, you probably want to re-interview because...
Charter, for Charter?
Sure.
Okay.
And one individual didn't respond to the request, so we'll be able to contact them again, so if you wanted to set it by a date.
This will be a non-council date, non-ski, regularly scheduled? Okay, so...
If that, that is certainly a, or we could do a proprietary council.
I think we could separate, separate meetings.
What do you guys think?
Get it all done, whatever's...
As long as we get enough folks to justify that, separate meeting.
And it's a, it's a five, like, five Mondays this year. In July, there's five Mondays, so maybe one of those Mondays would be useful, like the fourth Monday or something.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, like the twenty-second, to give you, yeah, that's quite a ways out, it gives everybody enough time to get this in.
And I think it's good to have it on the same nut, because you could say Monday is always council stuff.
Yeah. So twenty-second?
Sorry, I mean...
Okay.